Start with Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation by Grace Reformed. Okay, they are not here, so we'll start with the roll call.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldhammer.
Here.
Dozier.
Here.
McCardle. Barrington.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Charks. Eric Smith.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum, and just to let everyone know, we're having a couple of technical difficulties. We're gonna try to go live. I was gonna say that while we're on the air, but nobody's gonna hear it. So, we're gonna start with approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. Does anyone wish to remove anything?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss anything on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Aaron Heeb. On behalf of the Palace City Priesturges Party, takes place this year Thursday, July thirty first, from five to ten P M. down on Mitchell's Main Street. We have two new additions this year to the party. The first one being a motorcycle rodeo that's gonna be hosted by Cycle Source and the S and S Cycle Vintage Tour. They're gonna be making a stop in Mitchell as well. The custom bikes that were built will be set up and on display during the party on Main Street in front of the world's only Corn Palace. The party will also include a kid zone with various activities, featuring a Strider Bikes Track as well. Proceeds this year will provide Plankton Elementary with a kindergarten P E Learn to Ride program fleet, which includes twenty-four bikes, helmets, pedal kits, and two storage rolling racks. There'll be food vendors, vendor booths, and sponsor booths set up, a bike show hosted by Cycle Source, a car show hosted by Three O One Rods. The National Guard and Twin Rivers Old Iron Association will be participating as well. Our motorcycle entertainment this year is dialed action sports, their moto trial stunt show with three performances throughout the evening, and our main concert headliner from eight to nine thirty P M. on the Corn Palace Plaza stage. He's coming back from Nashville, Tennessee, Shelby Lee Lowe. And then last of all, as I wrap up, just first off, a huge thank you to our partners of this event, Clockworks, Jack Daniels, Metamuc Sanitation, All Kids Bike, and Cycle Source, as well as another huge thank you to our energetic and supportive sponsors this year, our flagship anchor sponsors, J N L Harley Davidson and Plains Commerce Bank, associate sponsors, Janklow Elias and Real Estate, Atria, The Window Shop, Quality Wood and Metal Designs, Iverson Auto, and Iverson Powersports, car show sponsors, County Fair Food Store and T M A, and the bike show sponsors, D and D Exhaust, S and S Cycle. Palace City Priesturges Party, Thursday, July thirty first, five to ten P M. on Mitchell's Main Street. See everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to discuss the consent agenda?
I have one item. The surplus items that are listed on the consent agenda for the consent agenda for mobile homes, two items have been deleted, and that's lot twenty-one and lot twenty-two. So I just wanna make sure I handed out that correction to everybody this morning or on the table today. There's one on the back table for the media as well.
Thank you for that correction. That was probably my fault, because there's a lot of trailers to learn in that area. Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with the roll call.
Dozier. McCardle. Barrington. Bathke. Charks. I. Smith.
Hi.
Sabers.
Hi.
Goldhammer.
Hi.
Motion carries. Citizens input. If you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Would anyone like to address the council?
Hi, I'm Terry Sabers, resident of Mitchell. I'd like to take a minute to commend John McLeod, Dwight Scott, and their team for the great efforts in cleaning up the shore trees out of Lake Mitchell. Not only does their effort make the lake a much more visi- make it much more visible to anyone traveling around the lake, much like the view on Highway thirty-seven that was cleaned up with the D O T project in the last six months. The best result, though, is that the additional areas that are available for people to get to the lakeshore to fish. The trees that are being removed are mostly scrub trees and bushes, and the remaining trees look much more healthy now that the rest have been cleaned up. In my trip to our development on Indian Head Drive, I see the area they are cleaning up near South Harmon Drive and see even more kids out there fishing now, because they can't share a spot fishing spot. You gotta have your own fishing spot. But there's a lot more of them out there now that there's more space. It's great that they are volunteering their time for this cleanup, as it would be very expensive to have the city staff do this cleanup work. I would hope that they can count on support from the park staff to help where needed to continue cleaning up these lakeshores. I encourage the mayor to continue to push everyone involved to support these cleanup efforts. If any of you run into either John McLeod or Dwight Scott or any of the team, tell them thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Um, I have something.
Okay, let me go to the mayor and city council discussion items. Okay. We're moving on. You're good. Yes.
Okay, okay. Liz is unable to be here tonight, but she asked me to just make a few little announcements. Uh, Mitchell Main Street and beyond is excited to have Palace City Brewing Company join us during First Fridays now, um, on Main, and we're gonna be approving that on the agenda. The dessert rumble is going on till the end of the month, so if you haven't been out to try some desserts, do and then vote. And it's, uh, just one of the ways that we can kind of assess what the economic impact and return on investment we have with this little event. Uh, Memorial Day Weekend in Mitchell is the Saturday. Join, um, everyone on the south at South Main down by the, uh, Depot Plaza. Is that what we named it? The Depot Plaza? Oh, Row Road Plaza. I couldn't remember. The Row Road Plaza. They've got just a full day of activities that ends with the barbecue rib championship tasting at four. Um, they're gonna have, there's just a lot going on, so check that out. Um, I think that that's off from Mitchell Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the city council want to say anything?
I wanna say, uh, thank you and way to go to, we forgot last meeting, to Chief Polarize for giving the vote across the board in a big way.
Ninety-five percent. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Anyone else have anything? Uh, the only other thing I have is Joe, Public Works Director. Trader and I were talking about doing council and public tours of the new facilities we have, such as water. What else? The recycling, garbage, wastewater. So, yeah. So, we're gonna be working on that. If you guys are willing to do that, we'll invite the, the, uh, public to that, and it'll be real exciting. If you haven't seen them, they're awfully darn impressive. Okay, anything else? We're moving on. All right, Board of Adjustment. Entertained motion for the city council to recess and sit as the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mrs. Charks. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Hearing and action for the application for Shayna Lecker conditional use permit. Shayna Lecker has applied for conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at seven ten North Kittridge Street, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. Um, Planning Commission did recommend unanimously unanimously, um, to approve this with the three conditions. Uh, license is non-transferable. If business ceases to operate for six months, then a new application be required and pass a fire inspection. Um, there was one letter in favor, um, for this. I did receive a couple of phone calls from the neighbors. Um, they didn't have any issues with the, um, daycare itself, just safety with high school kids traveling around in that area. Um, during discussion with this, um, they are cleaning up the property. They're putting a fence out front, and they're planning on putting a fence in the backyard as well. Um, they did pass a fire inspection since Planning Commission. Um, so she's met that criteria from Planning Commission. Um, I can answer any questions that you have.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Charks, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Any further discussion?
I just wanna say I received the call on it, and I'm a little concerned about the drop-off zone, because it's a, it's on that curve, and they blocked the homeowner to the south driveway. I wanna make sure that she understands she cannot do that for safety reasons more than getting some child backed into, because they're dropping off the same time they're going to work. And we wanna make sure they understand that the drop-off zone needs to be north of the existing driveway of their neighbor. And then, when I went by, probably three weeks ago, it looked like the, the play area for the children was the front yard, and that house is not very far off the street, so I'm glad to hear they're putting a fence up to keep the children at least behind the fence, because it's like they're literally playing in the front yard, and there's no, I don't know if the house is a little closer maybe than normal, and then with the curve of the road, that I wouldn't wanna, a bad thing to happen there, because as you said, the concern was the high schoolers zipping around the corner there, because it's quicker than going up the other way.
And they said during Planning Commission that they had moved their toys to the backyard at this time, while they were putting the fence up and then put the fence up in the backyard.
Okay. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
Uh, my name is Spencer Nation. I'm actually the homeowner to the south there at seven oh six North Kittridge, and I'm actually really glad that Jordan Destiny decided to do this now versus six months ago, because they have made an effort to really clean up the place and move everything to the back of the house. And so, my fiance and I, that we own the house next door, we are in favor of the daycare with what Bathke said. There does need to be a designated drops, drop-off zone just for the sheer safety of the kids, because, I mean, we gotta be honest, we're pretty dumb drivers back in high school, and the kids do come flying around there on Eighth to make their way onto Seventh and, you know, head their way home. So that'd be the only thing that we would request is just a drop-off zone there and to hopefully maybe keep the kids towards the back of the house and away from the street, because there are some times, you know, when I come home from work, five, six o'clock in the afternoon, and I'm going in the driveway, and I do have to be a little cautious of the kids once in a while, but they have made very big improvements to the property. I know they're cutting down all of those trees to the north there to probably make way for an actual designated play area in the backyard. So, yeah, I would say as long as they just kind of follow through with all that stuff, I don't think we would have a problem having a daycare next door. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application for First Presbyterian Church conditional use permit. The First Presbyterian Church has applied for a conditional use permit to install and operating an electric message center in the residential district located at five hundred East Fifth Avenue, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, Planning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Those were sent up to the neighbors, signs posted, uh, published in the paper. Um, there were two letters returned in favor of this. Um, if you go down a little bit further, Stephanie, um, the one on the, the left side there that you can see at the angle, um, they're requesting to replace the box of that, the interior. The brick will stay exactly the same as it is. It's just the interior box of it become an electric message center, so they can have their times of church or just change it maybe during Easter, uh, Christmas, things like that. But because this is zone R two per, um, code, it requires a conditional use permit. I can answer any questions that you have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCardle, second by Mr. Bathke. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Hearing and action on the-
I just wanted to let you know the livestream did start working too, so we have that live.
Sounds good. I got like nine text messages that you responded to, so I think we're all good now. All right. Hearing and action on the application for Todd Nancy Boyd variance permit. Todd and Nancy Boyd have applied for a variance permit in the front yard setback lakeside, twenty-four foot versus thirty-five foot. This is located at one fifty-five South Harmon Drive, le- legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended unanimously to approve this. Um, this time's posted, published in the paper. Um, notice and stuff to the neighbors. There are three letters returned in favor of this. Um, you'll remember seeing this from a previous meeting where they got the, uh, rear yard, which is roadside, um, setback. Um, when they started digging their foundations and footings and piers and pylongs, um, they realized that they're closer to the lot line than what they anticipated from what their drawings were showing. Um, so they stopped and tried to figure out options moving forward. Um, they'd like to have a covered deck, um, on the south side. I'll say the south side there. Um, southwest side, that's pretty much. Um, so with our ordinance, because it's a covered port or covered deck, that's where the setback would come into play. Um, so they're discussing options of removing it, changing the rough line, going halfway. Um, and then they decided to request the variance. They've stopped work on that portion of the house until they figure out what's going on with this. Um, they're here. If you have any questions for them or answering questions they have for me as well.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion?
I'm just curious. I'm not against him getting this. How did we get to this point? Does, did they not survey or?
I can't answer that. Um, looking at the plans that they presented, everything looked like it met the setback, and then I got a phone call from Todd Boyd saying, can you come out and take a look at this? We're definitely closer than what we anticipated, and so I don't know where they lost ten feet, essentially is what it seems like.
Because I know I've heard people say around the lake that one company surveys it and they'll say something opposite of what the other company says and stuff. So I wanna use this as a, as a point of reference. When we drain the lake, I really feel like there's, I already know there's gonna be a lot of shoreline work that wants people wanna do, and I really feel like we need to require them to have it professionally surveyed, so we don't have someone building something out too far into the water where a boat accident happens or something like. This isn't gonna happen here, obviously, because they're on land, but I just think that's something we really need to move towards with building permits is making sure they provide a professional survey, so we don't have this.
Thanks for the voids by coming back and doing the right thing. Appreciate you guys for that. Uh, anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Some people are saying that the audio still, like, are you getting those two? I was just responding, so they say it's a little echoey and sometimes a little quiet, so we're just working through our audio issues, so appreciate everyone. Okay. I wonder if it's for that speaker that's going into that microphone and creating a little-
It is still recording locally, so if the video's not great, we can upload the other one to tomorrow, so.
Okay, sounds good. So just for everyone at home, we're still working through it. All right. Hearing and action on the application for Cook Premier Properties LLC conditional use permit. Manbusker Homes LLC on behalf of Cook Premier Properties LLC has applied for conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling units between fif- five and twelve units located at fifteen seventeen Lakeview Lane, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Um, signs are posted, published in the paper, letters sent out to the neighbors. There are two returning in favor, one in opposition. Uh, they have concerns about the more traffic in the area and the narrow road that's out there. Um, at this location, what they would like to do is the fourplex that's there mirror directly to the north side of that, um, and then use the existing approach that's there already. Uh, that is two lots right there, so we discussed splitting the two lots into lot nine and lot ten. Lot nine would not have enough, uh, width for fourplex, so they would be required to have a variance if they went that route, so they went the conditional years route for the five to twelve units. Um, during discussion, um, one of the neighbors, like I said, with traffic, uh, concerns, wanted them to loop from the existing driveway down through the next item on the agenda, um, to have a loop kind of in that area for those people to use. Uh, Planning Commission did not recommend anything like that. Um, discussion for the road out there, um, they did pay for a portion of the road, but if they did anything more to widen it, it'd be an assessment that would have to happen. Um, the people that have already paid for the portion of the street that they paid for, the city would not require them to repay that portion of it, but if we did curb gutter, uh, street, um, sanitary sewer, um, storm sewer, excuse me, updates in that, that's what the assessment would go towards, not the existing asphalt that was there. I can answer any questions that you have. Um, applicant said he apologized. He had a conflict that he is actually at, uh, Brandon City meeting tonight, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Barrington. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application for Cook Premier Properties LLC conditional use permit. Manbusker Homes LLC on behalf of Cook Properties, Cook Premier Properties LLC has applied for conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling units between five and twelve units located at the one hundred block of Lakeview Lane, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Funding Commission, Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Signs posted, published in paper. Noticeance sent up to the neighbors. There was one returned in favor and one opposed, um, for the same concerns with traffic in the area. Um, this one, they would like to put two fourplexes, so it'd essentially be the ones to the north of it turned sideways to run north-south, two ranch-style fourplexes with access between them, uh, going down the Lakeview Lane. So in the end, there's an apex on this pro- piece of property and another fourplex on the, the north piece of property. Can I answer any questions that you have for this?
Motion by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment Hearing six dash two dash twenty-five. Lake West Inc. has applied for variance permit for the following front yard setback, ten versus twenty-five feet rear yard setback, twenty-five, twenty versus twenty-five feet on both side yard setbacks of three versus five feet. This is located at the one hundred block of East Eighth, legally described, as shown on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Reconvene in city council. Entertained a motion for the Board of Adjustment to adjourn and the city council to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Action to approve. Application for renewal of malt beverage license for twenty twenty-five, or two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. Chief, can that be?
Uh, the police department has no objections on the issues.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Birdle. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Action to approve the following alcohol license application, uh, of the Corn Palace Shrine Club for a special event liquor license located at the Masonic Cult for June seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and application for the Corn Palace Shrine Club for a special event liquor license located at the Masonic Hall, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, for a wedding. Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Action award, a bid for paving an overlay project, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. Mr. Trader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, bids were open on May thirteenth in City Hall Council Chamber was at one thirty. Uh, one bid was received by Commercial Asphalt. Um, bid schedule A for our paving and overlay projects, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents. Bid schedule B, which is the city picking up, uh, mixed at Commercial's plant for patching, is seventy-eight dollars per ton. Uh, the attached bid tabulation is there for your reference. Um, the bid tabulation also shows the previous year's pricing. Staff does recommend awarding bid schedule A and B to Commercial Asphalt. Uh, for your information, prices this year, uh, cost per ton for bid schedule A was a hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Last year's was a hundred dollars and thirty-two cents. Pickup at the plant is seventy-eight versus seventy. Um, contingencies for the overall project is five thousand three hundred dollars. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. Bathke. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Request for reserved parking spot at two hundred East Eleventh Avenue. Mr. Trader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, the resident living at two hundred East Eleventh Avenue has requested a reserved parking spot within the right-of-way along the curb. The resident stated that there's a limited, there's limited to no parking spaces available due to businesses in the area. I provided a location map, uh, for you in this area. Um, the property is currently a rental. I- if this is approved, city staff would place a reserved parking sign within the boulevard and paint the curb. Um, currently, uh, Public Works does not support this request, and I can answer any questions you may have.
What's the reasoning for have, for wanting the parking spot? Just because of-
It sets the business across the street. Uh, employees or people visiting the, the, uh, establishment, uh, park within the right-of-way in those locations, and there's times when they have to, uh, walk, uh, further than what they may like.
Who's it reserved for, Joe?
What's that?
Who are they reserved for? I don't understand it.
Be a reserved parking spot, uh, for that individual, which would have to be a, a permit type style, so P D could enforce it correctly. It'd be the, the rental property right there on that corner.
Do we have any precedents for this?
Do we have any?
Any precedents? Has there ever been anything like this done before?
I believe there's been requests, um, in other areas in town.
But where we've re- reserved a parking spot in front of someone's house for them?
Not since I've been, uh, working for the city.
I mean, I, I've always been told that, uh, the streets are, they're community property, right? Everyone can park there. Um, does, is there no off-street parking for this residence? It's hard to tell.
It appears on the east side of the property that there is a driveway.
What, I, I don't know how recent this picture is, but, um, I'm gonna move to deny.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Charks.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion?
I just think it sets a bad precedence, because if we don't have one already, this would establish one, and I just think that everyone would want a parking spot reserved for them in front of their houses, so we can't start that, so.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience or the applicant want to come up here?
Can you read the motion?
She has echoing bad in here.
Oh, the motion, she's motion to deny. Then we have a second. Okay, anyone in the audience? Okay. Yes.
I move to deny.
And we have a second on that. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. So that does not go through. Change order number five, Rice Lake West for pump station and ground storage reserve project, twenty twenty dash twenty. Oh, I'm on the wrong page. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. All right. Action to approve agreement A, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, hosted software and service agreement with H two O Analytics Corp. Mr. Trader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor and Council. On October seventh, twenty twenty-four, council approved moving forward with the customer proto for water usage information. The attached hosted software and services agreement is with H two O Analytics Corp. for their services. We are hoping to bring this software live within a couple of months. We have an internal training scheduled for May twenty-ninth with city staff and H two O Analytics. Staff recommends council approval of the attached agreement and are authorized the mayor to sign on their behalf, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mrs. Charks. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, developer agreement for tax increment district number forty-one. Mr. Johnson.
All right. Uh, the last meeting, council previously approved a resolution to create tax increment district number forty-one. Uh, this would be the developer agreement in relation to that tax increment district. Uh, the agreement simply lays out some additional terms as to how that increment gets passed on to the developer. Um, it's very similar to developer agreements that we've approved in the past. Uh, and with that, we can open it up to any questions. Just for your reference, taxing- And with that, we can open it up to any questions. Just for your reference, tax increment number, district number forty one. Was the one with Grohan Way LLC for the Woods Apartments.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. McCarty. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
I wanted to give the city council an update. I did follow up on this particular tiff with the department revenue. And one of the issues I brought up was the fact that these were basically two separate. Projects and I was concerned about the classification of the Manny Street. And when I brought the pushback on that requirement for a. Appropriate submission as to classification type, I was told that that's still in place, but because Mitchell does so many tests. It's kind of been overlooked for the city. So basically, it seems like the department revenue is kind of rubber stamping what we're doing here. And so then I got into my concern with the department revenue on the Manny Street and how it will be funded. Largely by property owners in the Mitchell School District and the county of Davidson. And that would include people outside the city limits. And this is a street within the city limits. And then I should go with understanding your concern. I will speak to it to my supervisor, but because it's a done deal. My option would be to take this to the vote of people here in the city of Mitchell. And I said, well, I'm not going to do that. But then I was going to take this issue forward at state level, because this is not just about the city of Mitchell. This is statewide concerning how our property taxes are being impacted by things like this. And so I plan on going forward to at the state level and speak with some committees. On the property tax that was just newly formed and there's also some work in the legislative government. Operation Audit Commission on the Department of Revenue and they have concerns with that department and other departments. So that's how I'm going to receive with this going forward. I just want to give the city council a heads up that. If some things come up at the state level about this particular project, I don't want it to be me giving the city of Mitchell a black eye for doing something that's going on statewide. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Oppose sign sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty five dash thirty seven, developer agreement for tax increment district number forty two, Mr. Johnson.
Alright, so same spiel we just went through on the prior agenda item. With this tax increment district number forty two, we're dealing with the Dale's A one project. Again, the developer's agreement would be in relation to the tax increment district that was created at the last meeting. And this agreement just lays out additional terms as to how the increment is passed on to the developer. You can open it up to any questions.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarty, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Oppose sign sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty five dash thirty eight, transfer agreement with the Mitchell Area Development Corporation, twelve hundred block of East First, Mr. Johnson.
Alright, well, I'll try not to get this one mixed up with the next agenda item like I did at our staff meeting this morning. So this transfer agreement would transfer the two lots on the north side of First Avenue in the twelve hundred block of East First. Located just west of the Arneys area. From the city to the Mitchell Area Development Corporation who would then transfer on to Habitat for Humanity for their projects on these locations. The purchase agreement is very similar to past purchase agreements that we've used. With Mitchell, Mitchell Area Development Corporation to pass these through to Habitat. I think this one was modeled after the one that we did on South Langdon, so. I think with that, we can probably open it up to any questions.
I just have one quick one. Why, I know you've said this many a times and it refers to, why can't we not just donate it directly to Habitat for Humanity?
I think in this situation, we could. That hasn't been the past practice, so it was just. You know, it was put together the way that we've done things before. If we wanted to do direct transfers to habitats for these types of projects. We've got the ability to do that under state law. It's just that habitually, this is the way that the city's done them.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second by Mr. Ranger. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
Thank you, getting mayor, getting Steve Simpson, and I read the contract and I see that the transfer purchase price is one dollar. City purchased this property, I believe, for a million dollars not long ago.
That was not for all of it. Just, it's just for a couple of the lot, the whole purchase was not.
Can you bring the map back up, Stephanie? But yes, we purchased the entire property for a million dollars and we're just donating this portion. Now, that was in part of the terms of the sale when we negotiated the contract, the seller did want us to donate this to Habitat for Humanity, so.
Okay, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the city buying property and then transferring it to a corporation that's private. Lack of transparency and it just doesn't seem like not something that benefits the whole community. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this?
Good evening, Mayor Hanson, council members and community partners. My name is Rachel Higginbaugh, Executive Director of Mitchell Regional Habitat for Humanity. On behalf of our organization, we want to thank you for your continued support for your commitment to housing solutions in Mitchell. We recognize that conversations around land use can sometimes raise concerns about displacement. These lots are vacant with no individuals or families currently residing on them. Our goal is to make, is to take these unused parcels and to turn them into something that serves public good. Affordable, excuse me, owner occupied townhomes with attached garages. These homes will complement the planned apartment development on neighboring lots and provide a broader range of. Housing options for our community and supporting quality of life, stability and economic mobility. This is what it looks like to move forward together. We're deeply grateful for the city's partnership in making safe, decent and affordable housing a reality in Mitchell. Thank you for believing in our mission, seeking to put God's love into action. Habitat for Humanity brings people together to build homes, community and most of all, hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, before you leave, first of all, thank you very much for having such an active group in town and helping families. With the Habitat for Humanity, so we very much appreciate that. And then second of all, do you have families that are already looking for lots at this point or will you take applications or how would they contact you?
Right now, we are starting homeowner credit classes and we're partnering with Mitchell Development and the city. And they're going to be facilitated through Lutheran Social Services, so we have. A knowledgeable community so that they know what they're getting into and know their range on what they're able to purchase. Thank you very much.
So the other thing, Mayor, is when you were visiting with the family, this was something that they felt that was very important, so maybe you just want to expand a little bit.
Yeah, so when we were negotiating the deal for the mobile home park, they wanted to, you know, kind of dedicate these two in the name of their. Mother and father that owned the park that had passed away. So that's kind of, you know, I don't want to say we got it for. Part of the deal and kind of got, you know, a better price for that, but I mean, I mean, it was part of the deal. They wanted to make sure that some homes went to, you know, Habitat for Humanity, so that's kind of the deal. Yeah, I asked them the same question. When can you start building tomorrow? I just asked her that. She said, no, not tomorrow, but you know, I said, well, do you have some families that, you know, or answered, which makes a lot of sense, is we don't. Go find people, get their hopes up until we actually have a lot in hand. Once it's easier to say, hey, we have something, do you want to build on it, then it's not like, it's a lot easier and nicer than you don't have to worry about getting let down on. The cool thing about Habitat for Humanity is they actually have to go build the thing themselves, you know, and there's a lot of donated labor, I think they said. Test years does the, or they bounce back and forth at the HVAC, a lot of, anyway, a lot of local contractors donate a lot of either material or labor and everything, so it's just a cool deal to get people portable houses.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Oppose sign sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty nine, surplus of the building at twelve fifteen East First Avenue, Mr. Johnson.
So if you want to pull the map back up, Stephanie, this would be just across the street to the south. There's two permanent residences on the trailer park property that we have just been discussing. There's one of those that is vacant and that's the one that you're dealing with here tonight, the twelve fifteen East First location. So much like we did previously with the SPN building back behind City Hall here to the east. What we do is we'd surplus the building, we'd set up an auction for people to come in and bid and. Take the house itself and they'd have no interest in the property at all. But we'd be following that same procedure that we did with the SPN building to get that moved off.
So why are we not doing the second one? You have somebody living there?
Yeah, the second, the second house is still occupied.
You know, and to give an update, so anything with anyone that's at home or you show the screen at home, now people at home can see what's on the screen. How exciting is that? Anything with a green access currently unoccupied or vacant, so about fifty percent of the property that the city had purchased is empty right now. We're going to start the move out next, this, this week, you know, depending on weather. Most of the services to all the green ones are disconnected. Anything that's not either livable or habitable or destroyed is going to be removed this week. There's three trailers that are actually in pretty good shape that are going to be going to auction. I think we're probably going to work on that, remind me of that tomorrow, Justin. And then we're going to start the auction process probably within the next thirty days and I have a couple of people that are interested in that. I've been through these trailers ten times probably with people just. Saying, you know, if you're interested, are these even salvageable? Purple Wave said none of them have any value whatsoever. Like, that's what the auction house said. So that's why we're going to try to, whatever's left and then, so that's where we're at with that. So we're going to do the next thing with the house. I was in the house, it's just, you know, there's not much you can do with that house. It's like probably five hundred square feet. The sightings, okay, I'm not going, it's going to auction, so it's really nice house. Just kidding. I hope someone takes it.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCarty, second by Mr. Bathke. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Oppose sign sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash forty, annexation of lot. Annexation as shown on the agenda, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. CGM Consulting Inc. Has petition to annex the property legally described as in the staff report. This property is located west of the bypass and north of Fifteenth Avenue as identified in the figure on the screen. Staff does recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer. Second by Mr. Brinkton. Any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Oppose, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash forty one, annexation of lot two of Singapore Slab Track One. As shown on the agenda, Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Mayor Council, J T Z Properties LLC has petitioned to annex the property as legally described in the staff report. This property is located north of the lake and west of Olman, as can be seen on the figure on the screen, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. McCarty. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First reading on ordinance O twenty twenty five dash zero five, establishing term limits for mayor and city council, Mr. Johnson.
Alright, so I was requested to put this ordinance together for council's consideration. Basically, what it will do is you, I'll start with the first version here, so there's two versions that you have in front of you tonight. First version would set term limits for office at three consecutive full terms. It would also define what is considered to be a full term as more than half of the regular term length. For the regular, you know, I'll say version one of this. It would not allow, or it would, it would count all past terms served by sitting elected officials towards the term limit. And the difference between this version and the alternate is that. In the alternate version, none of the past terms account towards the three term limit. So everybody that's in office right now would be starting with a fresh slate and then the term limits would kick in for all future elections. So that's basically the general concept. We do have language in there that help. Address a few specialty scenarios where it makes clear that a person is not term limited if they're moving from. One council position to the mayor position, or if they're moving from a mayor position to a council position. And the, the, the term limits. Reset themselves if the person has a break in service of more than that eighteen months. The last scenario that it deals with is when you have a person who is still interested in running, but they're term limited. They can still submit a petition and that petition would still be considered if nobody else ran for that seat. So if somebody else does run for the seat, then the person who's term limited out would not be eligible to run. And I think with that, that covers the whole ordinance. As I said, the difference between two versions is whether you count the existing and past terms towards the term limits or not. Otherwise, they're the same.
Justin, if we approve tonight, we'd have to select one of them tonight. Would that be correct?
Yep.
Okay, and then the second question is, is we've had councilmen, actually, councilwomen. Move from one ward to the next. Is that would not be, that is just a seat on council, not on a specific ward?
Right, so the way that the ordinance is presented right now is even moving from one seat to another seat in a ward. Unless you've had that eighteen month break in service, that would not be allowed. Neither would moving from one ward to another ward without that break in service of eighteen months.
Move to approve.
Which one?
Oh, sorry. Option one.
The which one?
The first option.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Goldhammer to approve the first option.
Just to be clear, that's the one that would not allow, it would not reset the slate. For existing officers, this is the one that would count all the terms existing and past.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion?
I personally would, if this was going to get voted in, would prefer the second one, but that's. Just me, just because of the rules weren't in place when he decided to run, but now there'd be new rules.
I'd agree with you, Jeff. But we can vote on the first one and deny it and go for the second one.
There could be enough support for it, but I just wanted to relay what, what my personal opinion is.
I would be okay with a friendly amendment to move it to the option two. I was just making a motion to continue conversation.
I would prefer we vote on what you said already.
I would prefer we vote on what you said already.
Okay, well, let's get some feedback from the audience if there's anyone in the audience. What do you want the audience like to discuss this?
And I'll just say for processing the motion, if if Tim's original motion fails, you can make an alternative motion afterwards for the other version.
Okay, well, Roger Music, appreciate the time. I'm all for the term limits. I think it's something that we should have and. I would like to see it go into effect and count the past terms. If you don't, my my way I understand it. Nothing would happen for nine years. So you're you're saying there really is a term limit still nine years from now, and I don't think that's what the the public would want. I've heard arguments that no one would run and I think that's possible. But if you look at the statistics, the person that is the incumbent has a huge advantage against anybody else. And I think that's what really discourages people from running today for the council because. They're probably have a five to one or ten to one disadvantage when they decide to run. Um, when the mayor put this on Facebook to see what the comments were, they were ninety five percent in favor of term limits. So I think that's a a pretty good indication that people want this. And I think just Jordan's election was a pretty good indication that people want to change. I think he would have been viewed as a change candidate. Um, I also like the staggered election, so you're not all leaving at the same time. I think that's the appropriate way to do it. You know, why do we need it? We need fresh ideas. We just need new new ideas at the council and we need to give the younger people a chance. To get involved and the more they're involved, I think the better off the city of Mitchell is.
I'm just curious, don't you trust the voters to decide whether or not they want the person?
If it was a fair election, I would. If both of them are brand new, neither one's an incumbent, I would. But when one's an incumbent, you look at all of our elections, Senate, House, all of that, the incumbent has a huge advantage. If you do the research on Chat G P T or something like that, it will tell you the incumbent has a seventy to ninety percent chance of winning. In a small election like the city of Mitchell. So I think it discourages people from running because they look at it and say, well, I have almost no chance. I don't want to put in the effort to run if I'm. You know, don't have a chance.
But again. The mayor is an example of someone who was elected.
Yep, and the mayor put in a huge amount of effort to get elected.
That's true.
We all put effort in when we're running for election.
The way I look at it, the the effort Jordan put in to get elected is probably three or four or five times. What a normal person trying to get elected in Mitchell has put in in the past. And, yeah, he did get elected. Um, but I'd like to give some young people a chance to serve on councils like this. I don't know how we expect them to grow. If they never have the opportunity to serve.
You know, I served on the um on the medical alliance. I was the president of the South Dakota State Medical Alliance. I was, I don't know. Young, younger, I was probably in my early thirties when I was the president and. Um, I was on the school board, whatever, but at the same time, I'm just thinking. Um, now it is almost impossible to get people in that same organization. Young, young people are busy.
Yep.
They have families, they have uh they're, you have, I think it's a a real problem. I I think that you're saying. The reason they're not running is because they're afraid they're gonna lose. I disagree with you. I think that they're. Not running because they're like, I don't have time to do that right now in my life. It'd be nice if we could, maybe they start on a committee and they work in a committee and they. Get involved on other things and then eventually they run for election, but I'm not gonna be supporting this.
Yeah, my understanding is the way the thing has been written is if nobody decides to run. The existing council person can continue to run, so that's that's kind of the fail safe there, Susan. Yeah, I mean, that's that's like we have it today when nobody runs. So if nobody, nobody's interested, we'll find out. Hopefully, we'll get two or three people interested and can have a real election. But I just think we need change. There's some of you that were on the council twenty plus years ago. When we were discussing, you weren't, but some were, discussing the last co- uh corn palace and we're still discussing the. Expansion of the corn palace. And when I talk to young people, they almost laugh at me when I ask them, should we expand the corn palace? And I think you need that input. I mean. As I was, the last time I was here, I presented and said, you need to go out and talk to young people in groups and go to a business and. Get ten of them together and ask them what they want. And if they had somebody on the council. Obviously, they could do that probably easier than we could do that. As you get older, it gets harder to change all the time. And you don't have new ideas, you just have the same ideas over and over again. We need, we need some new ideas at the city council. Other questions? Uh, great comments though, Susan. I don't see how you can lose. If nobody else wants to run, then you'll be elected. If somebody else does want to run. Then you won't, and I prefer that you implement it immediately, so it does take in the past terms.
I mean, I let's put that in a really extreme example, okay? Let's say that you have a reasonable person.
Yep.
Who is term limited out and Hitler decides to run for the office. And now Hitler's running for office and now you're, no one else can run, so Hitler gets the spot.
I think what will happen in.
But my point is just that you are limiting the public's ability to decide who they want to represent them. And maybe you don't have people who represent the vast majority of the people of our community. The people, someone who represents the values and represents the ideology and the the things that they want to support. But you have someone else who is an extremist and they're the only option, so they get it. I don't think this is a good idea.
Yeah, but someone else could run against.
The citizens of Mitchell would come forward and find somebody to run against them that they wanted to elect. That's what would really happen in that scenario. Well, I think it's pretty, pretty likely they would. And the other thing, let's pretend Hitler gets elected to your seat. They're one out of eight, so we have some and other people that are gonna keep them in line, right? Well, I do hope so, but I just think when people serve fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. It it's first off, if you're running against them, unless they've done something really stupid, you're not gonna get elected, so nobody even attempts it.
I look around this table and we have people with experience and people who have been here for a long time.
Yep.
We have people who are new on their first term. We have people who are somewhere in the middle. I think that that. Um, that makeup of a council is a good thing. I think that you've got people on the council who are bringing new ideas. You've got people who have. The historical perspective and they have um experience and they understand things. I I think you put a bunch of new people on council and. It's a learning curve, but still I think there's some.
The idea that if somebody runs against one of the existing councilmen, they're probably a four to one underdog when they decide to run. Just because of the incumbent situation. Well, the, you know, the other thing, I'm not sure it's it's good for anyone to serve more than nine years in a row. And once you're off for one term, you can go back or eighteen months, you can go back on if you want to. Which, but a lot of boards I'm on, they have a limit of how long you can be on the board consecutively. Once you're off for a term, you can go back on if they want you back on. That's pretty common, so.
I think the election's a people's choice. Let the people decide who they want to have on there, I think. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Well, what you're gonna end up is the incumbents are gonna win.
Well, the people are gonna vote whoever you want in.
Of the time for that because nobody's gonna run against them.
A- as somebody who's ran against an incumbent, I think that when I lost. It, the number of votes that I got was not so disheartening that I didn't get out of it. I figured out a way to be more involved. Uh, and then what I learned along that process is there's a lot of things that in running that I wasn't aware of and so. Um, that there's definitely a learning curve to this role, um, not only in running, but also once you're elected. Um, and so there's certainly value in having tenured council members on this board, I believe. And I also think that having a hurdle for somebody to have to face in order to get elected to this position. Isn't necessarily a bad thing from my perspective. Um, a- as somebody who uh has run in both contested elections that had three non-incumbents and then also an incumbent.
Who won that election? Was it the incumbent that beat?
So I I ran against uh when Mister Sabres originally was on, uh, we were in new to the position. There was no incumbent at that time. Uh, and then I I ran against uh Mister Rice and he beat me in that election. Uh, it was a close election. Um, and then I was elected this last time around and so, um, but it it didn't deter me from getting involved in the city. Um, and so I think it's a little disingenuous to say that if somebody were to lose an election or. And maybe this is me taking your words out of context, that they would not be engaged or involved in the city by losing an election. Because for me, I felt like it did the opposite, that it empowered me, um, because I did have a number of voters who said. We liked your ideas enough to cast your name on a ballot, and so that certainly kept me involved.
Not my concept. I went to Chat G P T and asked them about incumbents and running against incumbents. And they said, here's why people don't run against incumbents, because they're at a big disadvantage going in. And I think a nine-year term is probably enough of a term to serve on the city continuously. I mean, it's not a great paying job. I realize that. We appreciate your time and service. At the same time, it's probably something that is good to rotate in the other people's ideas and the fact that, you know. Typically, it's one or two people are only gonna be replaced if they're voted out, you know, on a. One segment, one at a time. Joe, how many of you have that would run at one time? In in the way your less the elections are set up now, two of them, four run at once, okay?
Yeah, I I didn't know who he was pointing to, so.
I'm sorry, terrible with names, yeah. So half of them run every, every three years? Okay. Okay, well, I think the general population of Mitchell wants term limits. It's pointed out by their comments on Facebook. A number of the people on Facebook said, well, if they won't do it, we'll have to. Do a petition and take it through a vote and and do it. And I don't think that's what you want. I think you want to do what the people want and.
I would argue that um the people that, you know, you have, you have a few people on Facebook. I don't know how many comments there were. Two hundred? Um, how many do you know? How many?
I had all my Facebook is like so much.
But I mean, it's a, it's a really small percentage of our community, so I don't, and I don't know that you can extrapolate that and.
I don't know, my Facebook has almost a third of the, it's got four thousand followers. I mean, that's damn near a quarter of the town.
How many commented? I mean, I don't know how many commented and said I'm against. I want, I'm in favor.
I went through and just counted percentage wise and it was about ninety five percent.
But once again, you know, I I think that the people have the power to vote us out. And in, and in fact, I say it often, like I'll say, you know, this may not be the most popular thing that I've ever done and you have a. You have an option, opportunity in three years and actually you won't ever have any more opportunities, so I can say this, but. You have an opportunity in three years to not vote for me again, but I'm gonna do what I feel.
Sure.
Is what I need to do and then you don't have to vote for me ever again, so you know.
Susan, I just pulled it up. There's forty six comments on there.
That would be a lot. Definitely not two hundred, yeah.
How many likes were there?
Forty-two. And who knows if they live in Mitchell either.
What was that?
And who knows if they're from town or where they're from. I mean, there's people from.
Okay.
Mount Vernon and Ethan.
Well, I I think we need new blood on the council and we need to give the people that are between twenty-five and thirty-five a chance. To serve on the council and I think that's the only way you're gonna get that is.
You know, one of the things that I've had the chance to do um the last several years is talk to leadership Mitchell. And I love doing it and that's one of the things that I say is you need to get involved. I tell them, you know, these are usually typically young professional people. You need to get involved. Start by volunteer, getting on a committee. Tell, get, you know, you can apply to be on anything that's interesting to you. Find a way to get involved and make your voice heard and and learn, find out what, if maybe this is something you want to do and then, you know. Take a shot at it and I encourage people to do that, but I don't think you need to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I mean, let's just give, encourage people to do it.
How how many of the council members here today have a a child at home, a young child at home? Okay, I think that's a an indication that you're not really representing the people that we are trying to get to stay in Mitchell. We're trying to get the twenty-five to thirty-five to forty to stay in Mitchell. And I think if they have a better. Chance to talk about it, they'll do a better job.
Just to be clear, I follow the demographic, but don't have any kids, so.
I'm gonna chime in here a little bit. Uh, I guess, like, I'm the one that wanted to see something happen with this, uh. Many of you know that have been on here. I spent probably, my wife would attest this, spent part of three years before I ran. And I specifically asked the legend Danny if he was gonna run before I ran, because I wasn't gonna run again, wasn't gonna waste my time. That's why I do believe that an incumbent, I believe what Mister Music is saying, has a ninety percent chance of winning. It's just a fact. Unless you've done something just totally wild off the board. But I spent three years of my life working seventy-five, eighty hours a week. But I still made it here Monday nights, more than you did, Susan. I'm not picking, I'm just, I know for a fact I made it here more than you. You just had some things you missed, but I was here. Okay? And. You weren't here. And I'll say the same thing I said to a lot of people. It's different watching at home than in this room. It is way different. It's way different. And people that come here and say, man, you're right, it is different. What I'm getting at is I would have never ran against him. I wouldn't have won. I'm not an icon. I mean, he did a lot of good things for the city and he knows a lot of people. So that's my point. See, this this incumbent thing. I I admire you guys for being on here twenty plus years. It's a commitment. It truly is a commitment. If you do the job properly. You're gonna spend time. You're not coming here on Monday night just voting on stuff. You're gonna do the research, you're gonna talk to constituents. And when I talk to my constituents, they're like, it's time for change. And I do think it's time for change and that's why I wanted to discuss it. If you guys don't want to do it, that's fine. It would be up to the people if they wanna pass the petition, put it to public vote. Cause I I feel that's the way it's gonna go.
I'm amazed that you want to serve more than nine years. I I am. I mean. Well, I watch the city council meeting when I'm not here most of the time and they're not the most exciting thing in the world. I mean, it's a a lot of. Routine stuff.
It's the most fun you can have on a Monday night. I say that all the time. Yeah, I agree with uh Mi- Mister Beth Key on this. Like, it was, for me, it was like, I sat in that audience for three, four, or five years and even more time at home, probably. And then I started my campaign two years ahead of the election and then spent like almost ten thousand dollars of my personal money. And that is absolutely bananas and I barely squeaked by and it's. That's, that's a, I mean, is that the commitment everyone should have? And like now I walked away from a business. Just to do this job. And I mean, you know, I don't think anyone should have to be doing that much. And and I'm gonna be quite frank here, and I don't even like to admit this publicly, but I was looking at two things during the election. One. Was how they win an election and two was homes in other states. Cause if I I could never be put on a committee, are you kidding? There's only one person that appoints. People to committees in this town, the mayor. You think the guy that I just lost to is gonna say, yeah, be on a committee? I doubt it. And it's, and like, I've appointed a lot of people to committees that have like been, I've been trying to get on committees for ten years and no one would ever let me on them. So it's, it's tough to get on committees when. I'm the only guy, so I'm appointing all kinds of people that are new and young and it. I think some people, and again, there's three things people ask me for in this town as mayor a lot. One. Is more activities, two is term limits, and three is they want to raise chickens in their backyard. And that sounds crazy, but that's probably gonna come up here shortly because we're supposed to listen to our constituents. And I know it's, it's crazy, but. People ask for it a lot and I just don't know that anyone has the willpower to do it as much as I did. And it was crazy. I mean, I. Tremendous amounts of work. I don't expect anyone else to do that, but I care so much about this community. That's what I was willing to do.
And I'm, we care too. Uh, yeah, I'm obviously of the age that I'm not making decisions like this, but I have hired a lot of young people. And I go talk to them and that's what they're telling me to. They want some change. They want to have some input. They want. Things for their kids to do. Things for their kids to do, they could care less about a park for tourists, they want something for their kids to do in the winter time. And some, some place to take their kids where it's nice and warm and they can have some inside swings or whatever for little kids. Those are the things they're asking for, along with affordable housing is obviously a, a big thing for everybody. Anyway, I think it's time for a change and I. Hope that you can vote, and I hope you can vote for the, the first option, because even if you put in term limits and you say it's gonna start nine years from now. It's the first time it will be effective, I'm not sure the population is expecting term limits. In the next generation. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else, else in the audience that would like to discuss this?
Mark Genegas, not with the city. I think uh it's not fair to say young people only, new blood should probably be the term, because. Anybody should be able to run for this, not just new year, young people, um. I also don't think that it's fair to just rubber stamp someone new because the incumbent has to be done. So I would say to change the, if it's going to be term limits, there has to be two petitions before the incumbent cannot run again.
That's actually a.
So that way there is a vote for that position.
That's a good compromise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Basky, um I actually wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but Susan, you inspired me to come up.
So inspirational.
In twenty twenty one, all of you sitting here know that I ran for city council, I ran against Marty Barrington, the incumbent. And it was tough, and I lost. I got forty three percent of the vote, which was a really good showing, against an incumbent. And I had a couple of things going for me, I was a woman, which we need more of on the council. And I would have been the youngest person on the council, because I did have a child living at home also, um so I would have fairly represented. A dynamic that many of you don't represent, um. I guess I would say that I feel like, you know, you said something about, don't you trust the voters. You'd be amazed how many people go to the voting booth without researching things. And so that is why the incumbent name pushes forward and wins so much of the time. I'd have to say that uh. I feel like. When you've got people running term after term after ter- term, it's almost like a little bit of an exclusive club. And it's very hard for people to break into that and they realize that. So I feel like when somebody runs so many terms in a row, it's really holding people back from wanting to come forward. And put themselves out there as a candidate, and for those reasons, I would really encourage you to vote for the motion as it stands on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, any further discussion before we take a vote?
What's the motion?
Okay, the motion is to, I'm gonna let Justin.
So the current motion, current motion was to adopt the, the version one, which would. Have counted all current and previous terms towards the term limits, so it's not the clean slate version. That would have been version two.
If we did wanna entertain. The adding two people before they're termed out, is that something to do now or later or?
I I would say deal with the existing motion and then you can take whatever action you want to after that.
Well, without any further questions, then all those in favor of the, the current motion, say aye. Both same side? Motion fails. Okay, so now what happens?
So if there's any alternative motions, uh you could adopt the second version or you could make changes um and and adopt that version.
Would anyone like to make any adoptions?
I I typically will support always on, on the first reading, just to get some more input. And so I will make a motion for the second option.
We have a motion for the second option. And you got a second, thank Mr. McCurdo, okay, further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this portion?
And I'll just add, mayor procedurally, we would bring that second version back for second reading. If council wanted to consider any further changes at that time, they certainly could. Um if it's a substantial change, then we would bring it back for another second reading after that, so. At this point, it would just be moving that version two on to second reading.
Would you consider adding a second candidate, a substantial change?
I think that would probably be a substantial change and require a, a second, second reading.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye? Sure, let's do a roll call, it sounded confusing.
Barrington? Basky?
No.
Charks?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Sabers?
Aye.
Goldammer?
No.
Docher?
No.
McCurdo? Four to four.
So. I break the tie? I'm, this is my first vote ever. I never thought I got a vote, interesting, uh I will vote in favor.
Okay, and just to be clear, that's gonna bring it back for second reading at the next meeting with that version two. If you wanted to do the, the two candidate option, um you could consider that at this time and then I could bring that alternative language back at the next meeting.
Or we can just think about it on the next meeting.
Right, yeah, that's however the council wants to go on that.
Okay. Next, first, this is gonna be a long one, first reading on ordinance oh twenty twenty five dash zero six, creating a rental housing code. Mr. Johnson?
All right, well, this is a long ordinance and I'm gonna try to keep my summary as brief as I can, um. It's been a priority of the council, um and. Uh to, to present this uh rental housing code program for uh quite some time, it's been up for discussion. This is uh the model ordinance that staff was able to put together for council's consideration. Um it's meant to be a, a basic framework that could be improved upon, improved upon in the future. Um starts out by providing some basic definitions, um I'm not gonna go through those at this time. Uh the second section makes clear what this does and does not apply to, um a few things that we're excluding are. Operations that are owned or operated by governmental institution, educational institution, public or private campgrounds. Uh lodging establishments that only serve transient guests. And assisted living or similarly oriented facilities um are not covered by this ordinance. Getting into the basic framework of the ordinance, uh what this will do is create a licensing program for rental houses. And rental units, um it will require everybody that's uh engaged in that business to obtain a license. Um understanding that. The initial implementation is going to take some time to do and get everybody through that first round of inspections. Uh we do have a section that covers that transition period. Basically, you would have a period where applicants that are currently renting houses would come in, they request their license. And then they get scheduled for those initial inspections, and as long as they've applied within that first thirty days. They get to continue operating until they make it all the way through that initial inspection process. I don't think I'll go through a whole lot of more detail on that, um as I said, those initial inspections would get scheduled as allowed. Uh we don't know with staff time how long that's gonna take, but they're gonna try to work through it as fast as possible. Um and then, you know, basically as time and scheduling allows to get through those, uh the, the big thing with that is. We're not looking to have anybody discontinue their operations during that period, as long as there's not any life safety issues or anything like that. Um so moving on, we provide some basics on the application, um and we require the appointment of a local agent. Um which would be that person that is within. Oh, I don't see the mileage right in front of me, but uh we set a distance that that person has to be within the city so that they can be present for. Uh things like inspections and, and work with uh local officials on the application process, that kind of thing, so. Moving on to section six then, uh we get into the actual. You know, how, how the pro, how, how, how the program would be operating once it's fully up and running, so. Um applications would come in, they'd get scheduled for uh an inspection. The houses and units would get evaluated independently, so you've got somebody who. Um is gonna hold a license that covers multiple rental houses or men- rental units. That license is gonna cover everything under that umbrella and then everything under that umbrella is gonna get inspected individually. So. Each part can get its own grade, you might have a rental unit that fails, but that won't count. That won't cause the entire house to fail, or the, the rental house to fail. You might have a rental house that fails uh due to a common area that only affects one rental unit. And then the other rental units would be fine, so if the idea is to try to keep the remedial work. On the lowest level as possible, so only the parts that are actually impacted um are getting. Those failing grades and they're impacted by the failing grade, so. If everything passes, uh they get their license. Um I kinda went into that already, failures in common areas could potentially cause failure for units and maybe or maybe not vice versa. We talked about how the license would cover everything. Uh we also provide in there that um if they need to update or add units. Uh to their rental house, uh there's a procedure to do that. Um and also to turn, uh transfer that rental house, rental unit to uh another individual. All right, so moving then on to more details on the inspection process, um. Provide for getting the application, scheduling, having the agent be present and preparing the site to do the inspection. The official is going to make a report. The, if they do find items that need to be repaired, they'll issue their order and provide a time period for that. Item to be corrected. Um because we're in the. The regular process now, uh the ordinance would state that anybody who's submitting a new application. Would not be able to rent that unit or house until they pass the inspection. Um if you loop that back up to the first section that we talked about. If we haven't made it through that initial round of inspections yet, um somebody that submits their application. After that first thirty days, but before we've made it through that initial rounds of inspections, you still treat them like. They submitted their application in time, and then you do their inspection uh when permitted and they could rent it and rent it in interim. All right, so if the, if the house or unit passes the inspections or they fix the, the items that need to be fixed within the times. Uh that was provided, then the passing status pl- uh stays in place until their next inspection. If you have the situation where a new house is unoccupied and it fails inspection, we don't set a specific timeframe for. Doing a reinspection on that, that applicant would request reinspection once they've made the corrections and. Uh the reason that there's no set timeline on that one is because there's nobody in the unit, there's no pressing need to go back and do it on a. A fixed timeline, we can do it on the owner's timeline. So for the reinspection portion of this, this is after you've had somebody make the application, they've got their first inspection done. You get them on a reinspection schedule, that would be at least twelve months out. Um we don't know exactly what that timeline's gonna be at this point until we start getting through the first round of inspections and we figure out. How long it might take to work your way back through the cycle. Um but we know that we'd, we'd set that at least that twelve months out. Uh we'd also provide for inspections per cause, this would be where you've got a tenant that comes and makes a complaint, says, you know, my unit doesn't have this. So staff would go and they'd do a, an inspection on that, uh depending on the nature of it, they might. Go and do that immediately, or they may have a shortened timeline on when they can get in there and do it. The idea would be for those to happen fairly quickly and for those to be limited to the purpose of what's being complained about. It's not gonna be a full reinspection and it's not gonna change the date of their next scheduled reinspection. It's just focusing in on that one issue, but if they do find something while they're there. Um that they weren't specifically looking for, but they find it while they're there, they're obviously going to still address that issue. Okay, so orders are correct, uh we'll identify issues uh found and give those deadlines for correction. Uh we don't want uh people having to leave the unit unless it's a very serious life, uh life safety issue. Um and then if they're given that timeline and they aren't fixing the problem. Then you'd have to move, look at moving towards that next step of considering termination or suspension of the rental license. Um which could potentially require that unit to be vacated. Uh next session just gives them uh broad, the inspector brought authority to extend those correction deadlines if. You know, say the inspector has a full schedule and they can't get there in a certain period of time, or they see that the. Uh owner is making efforts towards making those improvements, but maybe for factors outside of their control, they can't get it done within the timeframe. That rental inspector is gonna be able to work with those individuals and extend those deadlines where, where appropriate. Okay, so we kinda touched on the next section two, uh we provide for renewals, transfers and updating information. I won't go into detail on any of that, uh we do also provide for suspension and revocation. You can run into a few different scenarios for that, scenario one would be. You have a, a failed inspections, but it's not a life threatening condition. So in that scenario, the suspension would be effective upon the expiration of the deadline. You've also got the, the next scenario where you have a failure, but it's a life threatening condition. And that could require the immediate vacation of the property, um and getting the tenants out of there right away. Keep moving through. Uh so let, let's take a second on section D here, um so I'll, I'll just kinda walk through this. If an owner has had their rental house license suspended multiple times in relation to a specific rental house unit. A rental house or rental unit, or if an owner has had their rental house license suspended multiple times. In relation to different rental houses or different rental units, under that same rental house. City may revoke the rental house license as to either the specific rental house or rental unit. Which has been repeatedly suspended or as to the rental house license in its entirety. So you've got a couple of different scenarios there where you could run into suspension or revocation. The most important thing here to look at is the factors that you'd be looking at when you're considering that suspension or revocation. And those are provided there, um and it would be up to uh the body at the time that they're considering it. As to how they would weigh those factors. Um, next section, subsection there just talks about how the process gets started, we won't go into detail on that. Uh, the next section, we make reference to our general penalty provision, uh, which is in place for violations of all. Any violation of city code. We do also provide uh, some general authority for the rental inspector to, you know, be able to carry out. Certain items uh, that are gonna fall under their duties, like establishing those deadlines, issuing orders, that kinda thing. Uh, then we get into the appeal procedure for how these can be, um, if an adverse action is taken in order to correct is done. You'd get into how that owner can appeal those orders or adverse actions. And again, I won't get into a whole lot of detail there, um, the main points would be is that. The ordinance is currently set up to have those appeals heard by the city council. It provides the basic procedure for how those hearings would be conducted and. Uh, again, provides information and standards as to how, what the council should be looking at. When uh, hearing those appeals and making those decisions.
Um, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Okay, so um, is that the very first thing that happens if they appeal is it, is heard by the council?
Uh, well, they'd be initially working with the rental inspector, um, but after the rental inspector. Then the, the appeal would go to the city council, that's.
And, and I use this as an example, but I remember when we were, when I was on the school board. Um, there were, there was a chain of command that did, it didn't just go. Um, you know, a child got in trouble at school and it went straight from vice principal to the school board. And there was a, a policy that was written that took, you know, some escalation. And I wonder about that being the first appeal process, if there, if there's a, maybe we have.
So.
The board that is the group that put this together, maybe they hear it first or something.
So I'll, I'll give you my, my thought process on that, uh, because we do go further down here and we talk about how it can be appealed into court. So my view on this is that the city council, or if we chose some other board, um. They really aren't necessarily the final scene, because you're more than likely going to end up in court on the matter anyway. So, in the interest of having these issues resolved in a more timely manner. I think more levels of appeal is only adding to the timeline of having these issues resolved, so. I, I can understand where you're coming from, um, you know, maybe wanting to have a different, you know, intermediate level of appeal. But I think that's only going to add time to the process. Where you're going to end up at the same place anyway, which is in a courtroom. So. Nope, that's, that's fine.
So, Justin, if I may interrupt, um. We, we have a, somewhat of a similar um, ordinance with the vicious dog. And um, then obviously, you know, we, we have um. Our code for, enforcement officer, whatever they're called, um, would indicate that that, that animal. Is now considered vicious, and you can either comply with what the, what our rules are in our laws and so forth, or you can appeal it. And the appeal system goes to the chief of police. And we used to have it come to council. And, and in reality, it, it, that might've been before your time, but it, it was gut wrenching. To, to hear and go through, and in the end, I mean, um, we, almost a hundred percent of the time. Back the enforcement, enforcement action. And, and then they have the ability to take it, you know, to the court system if they want it. Would there be any merit in actually, in a similar, it's not even board, it, it's the chief of police. To select some city employee to be that a- appeal process, and then they've got the court system after that. So bypass the city council.
So I, I'll just say that one of the things that we'll be looking at in the future, and this is. You know, neither here nor there, but one of the items that's on my long list of projects to do. Is to modify that appeal procedure for the vicious dog ordinance. Um, and possibly create, create a general appeal procedure for the city. Um, instead of just have, instead of just having uh, that final appeal go through the chief of police. So. I guess in, in response to your question, we, we could add that other level of appeals to this uh, ordinance. But we likely need some other body, whether it's the city council, or we appoint. A general appeal board to hear these types of matters, but um, we'll likely be moving back towards having. Uh, those items either heard by the city council or a, a, a different specific board to hear those appeals.
Justin, who does a nuisance, if somebody has a problem with what they call a nuisance, who do they? Report to, and who makes that decision?
Yep, so nuisances would currently, and you know, they start with the, the nuisance code officer. Um, once they make it through their process, they issue an order to correct, if somebody wants to appeal that.
Yes.
We did, we did establish a nuisance appeal board for that.
For that, same type deal.
Yep.
Is that made up of citizens or city employees or?
Um, it would be, they're appointed uh, individuals, I don't think it's city employees.
Okay.
But I don't remember who is on that board.
Your thought process on the vicious dogs would be similar?
Right, yep, and whether it's specifically for vicious dogs, or whether it's a more general appeal board. We'd be looking to move towards that direction at some point here in the future. Okay. Um, again, I won't go into a whole lot more detail on the, the formal process, like I have already referenced, once you make it through that appeal. Um, and uh, the, the. I'll just say appeals board uh, gives their final decision on the matter. Um, then the individual would have the right to take that action into court. Uh, we do set out some procedures for how that would take place. Next section, we move into fees, um, and at this point. We haven't assigned any dollar values or anything to those, but we do provide for a number of different fees that may need to be charged. Um, or we, we lay out a number of matters that could warrant a fee. Um, some of those include the application fee, um. You know, thi- things like failure to correct the condition, failure to submit their renewal on time. Uh, various different admini- administrative things that could justify a fee being imposed, excuse me. Um, and those would all be set by council by resolution at a future date. Um, we haven't got down to the section yet, but the idea with the implementation of this ordinance would be that it would not be effective until January first. Of next year, so we'd still have time through the end of the year to discuss fees. Um, you'd still need to make changes uh, organizationally and through the salary um, resolution. To, to consider that new employee to fill this rental inspector role, so all that stuff would still be done throughout the rest of the year. Um, moving in then to the inspection standards, um, we met as a large group with community involvement. And we met as a, a staff group internally to discuss all these standards. What we've come with, um, at this point is a list of thirty-three different items that we. Would use as our initial standards for this program. I can tell you the ones uh, that I've kinda highlighted here that got the most consideration and the most discussion throughout the process was. Number four, on whether to require private sidewalks and walking paths to be in safe condition, free of tripping or other hazards. So the stuff that you're talking about there would be, you know, say example, a sidewalk from a garage to the residence. A, a detached garage to the residence, or, you know, from the, the mailbox out front to the front door, something along those lines. The other one that got a lot of discussion was number twenty-six. And that would be your discussion on emergency escape and rescue openings, like your egress windows. Ultimately, staff. Uh, and we, we discussed this before with city council too, before it, it came to finalizing the ordinance. That this one was probably gonna take some consideration, but staff, uh, I guess fell on the side of including this. And requiring those windows types and locations to be compliant with city code, including those. Uh, emergency escape and rescue openings. And then, our next section would go into some of the limited grandfathering of these conditions that. Uh, staff felt was appropriate. So keep in mind, all those standards. Initially for new applications, somebody who's coming in without having the unit rented. Uh, who's not using it as an exa- uh, as a existing rental. So when we're talking about existing rentals and kinda how we transition those ones in. We have some limited grandfathering. You can see those listed out here, the first one would be for subsection six, and that would be for vertical spacings in old constructions. Uh, what we're saying with those, if you go back up to the standard, it requires a four inch. Uh, or openings not greater than four inches. Uh, between, you know, your, your vertical spacings on a stairway, so your, what do you call them? Banisters or? Spindles, there, there's the word, so your spindles need to be a certain distance apart. The grandfathering says, yes, they do, um, but if they don't meet that, that's okay, you don't have to re-space them. You just have to make sure that the ones that are there aren't broken or missing. So that, that's the, the concession that we've made on that point. Uh, for the next section, stairs without uniform risers in old construction do not need to be replaced, but they must be in safe working condition. So, the, the basic standard is that stairs have to be evenly spaced. This is saying, well, they don't have to for the old construction when it's already been used as a rental. But you can't have a set of stairs that's falling apart, or somebody's gonna put a foot through it, something like that. Uh, so the next one would be for smoke detectors in old construction, uh, we're saying that they do not have to meet the hard wiring requirement. But they do need to be functional and unexpired. Um, and then for twenty-six, that's again, the egress windows. Um, and emergency escape and rescue openings, so below ground level. Uh, those have to have a net clear opening of at least five square feet. So a net clear opening is when you're operating the window under normal circumstances. And you open it, it has to be able to, the, the area that it covers needs to be at least five square feet. So for.
I think you have that back, I think you might have that backwards, right?
No, it's.
The part that, the part that opens is three point three square feet.
No, so we're, we're, we're just, right now, all we're talking about is basement.
Okay, oh, basement, sorry.
So for ground level and above, you only need that space of three point three square feet. But the total window opening has to still be above that five, so you might have a window that is top and bottom. And only the bottom comes up, well, the bottom is above the three point three, but you could break the top part out and still have over five. So the staff made a distinction there between below ground level and ground level and above. Um, and then. Number, uh, standard twenty-seven there, bathrooms with a functional window or exhaust fan. Uh, those are just, uh, those are exempt for all uh, current rentals. We do. Uh, require notification to potential renters and tenants. About some of these failing conditions, uh, so that they're aware of. Or, excuse me, not, not the failing conditions, but the grandfathered conditions. So that the, the tenants are aware of those conditions before they rent the place, or they're aware of them while they're there. Um, and then we did have a section in here on hazardous mold, the process for that is gonna be a little bit different. What we're requiring there is the tenant would need to come in with a report from a professional mold testing company. Before we would get involved on that, um, and then depending on what that mold report came back with. Uh, the city could then require remediation of that hazardous mold. Um, but that's not something that the city's going to be actively inspecting for. That's something where we put that initial burden on the tenant to uh, investigate and report. Um, next section then is just your status registry, that's where we keep track of which units have a, a passing and failing grade. And provide some limited information on that. And then the rest of the sections here are kinda your, your basic boilerplate where um, we're saying that. If some part of the ordinance. Does not, um, isn't, is found to be unconstitutional or unen- unenforceable, the rest of the ordinance stays in place. And then we're also providing there that the other codes of the city, like the fire code and the building code, those still apply, they just apply on their own, so. Um, then the final part there, I already talked about where the ordinance would be intended to go into effect, January first, twenty twenty-six. So, again, that's a, a lot to go through, um. So I, I guess we can open it up, there's been a few questions so far, but.
I have a question, have you decided what department might oversee the program, I mean. Planning, zoning, fire department, police department, have you decided who's going to be responsible for that?
Yeah, man- management did talk about this morning, uh, at our staff meeting, and they just did decide that it was gonna be corn cows.
Cornelius is gonna knock on the door.
They, they got plenty of time, huh?
So I, I don't think there's a firm plan at this point, I think that might depend on how some of the future discussions go as to. How you create the job duties for the position, what makes most sense for them to be put at. Um, you know, it could, it could be public works, it could be on your PD, it just, where does it make the most sense?
Undecided at this point.
Right.
I think, I think on that same note, I've talked to a couple of people. And it's just, just a conversation I think we should have is, do we let a private company handle this that we choose? So we don't have to buy a pickup, we don't have to pay a salary, insurance and all the benefits to go with it, and could we get that number down? Per unit price by going through a, an actual home inspection company that we pick, just a thought.
Um, and I know that they do that sometimes for nuisance matters, um. I'm not sure how that would work, um, usually when you're dealing with it on the nuisance side, they require adoption of the international property maintenance code. So I'm not sure how well they would, you know, if you're bringing somebody in to enforce our rental inspection program. I'm not sure how you, if you'd find some company that could do it. Or if they, if a company would be expecting a certain code that they're familiar with, uh, to, to carry out that, I, I don't know.
One other question, uh. I sat in on one of the committee discussions for a, a number of hours, and there was quite a bit of discussion on this egress window issue. And basement apartments, et cetera, et cetera. At the end of that meeting that I sat in on, it was kind of undecided, it was gonna be looked into research further. Is this, uh, rules have been adopted by other towns and their ordinances, or did we just make up? For the fire department say, or the emergency, emergency personnel say we need three point.
So.
Three point three, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that the rule that we ended up on is probably a combination. You know, it, it's kind of a mix of what other communities have done, and kind of what's required under the fire and building code for uh, your emergency. Uh, yeah, emergency access and openings, yeah, I, I forget the term. So the, the, that five square foot that we used as the standard, that's, that's the area that they use. Area that they use uh when they're looking at those, I'm just gonna say egress windows, because that's what I'm used to talking about. Um so that that's where that five square foot standard comes from. Other communities, um I forget which one used that three point three squared foot, Stephanie.
I think it was Brookings.
I think it was Brookings. That that's that's another community that we pulled that number from. Other ones were firm with using the five square feet. Other ones used it kind of based off of when the property was constructed. But most of the, all of all of them that we looked at were within between that three point three and five square feet. So we felt that this was a fair compromise to. Require it where we felt it was most needed and allow a little lenience to those existing structures. On those ground floor and above where. You know, you might have more of an opportunity to break something out that you would in a basement to try to get through. You know, and and up to the ground level.
I want to apologize to you, Justin, because you're right on the five square. I was talking, I thought we were talking. The egress window well. Needs to be nine square feet. That's where I came up with that nine square feet, because I put a bunch of them in, but you're incorrect on the five.
You know, when we were having, this is Stephanie, Illinois City Administrator. When we were having the staff discussion on where to land on that exam exemption. Um fire department gave a good example that. You know, when we're talking about the basement level, that's one thing, but the other floors, they'll find a way to get in also. They can help. On the floors that are above the ground.
Uh Justin, I just want to say thank you for putting the time and effort into this as well as the committee. I know that. Uh a lot of hours were spent doing research um and coming to a table with a bunch of different people and. Kind of funneling all of the different opinions at that table into this ordinance. I really appreciate that. Uh that being said, I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldayman, sorry, second by Mr. Barrington. And yeah, real quick, building off what Tim said, we did have, just for everyone at home or anyone that's listening. We did have the police sit in on this, we had the fire department, we had a state uh electrical inspector, we had the coat and forceful building inspector. We had someone from the Department of Equalization, we had builders, developers, landlords, tenants. And then our attorney, public works director, and at city admin. So there's a ton of people. Sometimes it gets a little heated. And then we spent probably ten to twelve hours, well, we had to spend more than twelve hours on this. And Justin probably spent like a thousand hours on this. He's got a big list of stuff to do that portfolio, but um yeah, thanks for doing all that work. But it wa- it wa- you know, I think our number one thing was safety. I kept saying over and over, like, the intent of this is supposed to keep people safe, you know. Sometimes, it's like, yeah, we don't want everyone to go spend, like, a landlord to spend twenty thousand dollars to fix their. House, obviously. So we tried to make it as simple as possible, but still keep safety in. That was like the number one thing.
Yeah, and when I talked to my peer group about uh what might stop them from moving to Mitchell, one of the things that regularly gets brought up is housing. Uh especially, um even if they are in a place where they could buy their first home. Uh many of the times they're still renting when they first initially move here. And there's definitely been some times, and I've been in this situation where um you go to uh look at a rental and you ask the question. How is this up to a code and how does the city of Mitchell allow this? And so uh it's something that I've been very passionate about, and so. I think that is something that my peer group would definitely like to see, is some kind of inspection to get everyone on the same page. Without trying to create unfair burden. Um and then they also will have some time, because this isn't going into effect tomorrow by any means. And so um it creates an area where some of the renters and rental is, will be able to at least know about this going forward.
Well, I'm I'm sure there's hundreds of hours that was put in. Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, I was just gonna say, to to Tim's point, the intention with these standards is, you know, to to kind of set a minimum that we start at. Knowing that we may come back and modify these at some future date, but to, for the purposes of getting the program. Off the ground and running, we wanted to, you know, try try to come up with things that were manageable.
And and I was just gonna say, something as simple as having fire detectors at every rental. In itself is well well worth our effort, at least going through, and that we can obviously tweak this as we go. Um one one suggestion, though, and I don't, I don't care, you know, if if we follow through with this, but. And and maybe initially the city council is the board of appeals. But where we have listed appeals that says city council, I would like to have the appeal board. And maybe the council is the appeal board. But maybe we transition into an actual committee that that we would feel comfortable with, but I don't know if that language needs to be. Discussed tonight or not, and we can always change it in the future, but. Initially, the city council could be the board of appeals, but maybe in the future we'd, we would want to change that.
Yeah, and like I said, one of the things on my list to do is to consider adopting or. Consider presenting an ordinance that would create a more general appeal board for the city, so. This is something that you could, as part of that ordinance, transition these duties over into that board. Or if it's something where the council would rather we create a specific appeal board for this program. We we can do that too, and we can do that either here tonight, and I can bring that back for the next meeting. Or we can move forward with this, and we can make that change on a future date. It's however the council wants to proceed.
Because I was just looking at section four, twelve, nine, um E. And it has city council will hold a hearing on all rental home license revocations prior to the revocation. Uh becoming effective. So, you know, we meet every two weeks. And if there's an emergency, we can meet, but in reality is. Maybe the, maybe the committee would be more active or more ability to um to meet. If there is some type of an emergency, we think we need to act upon quickly. Sometimes it's tough to get five of us together.
Yeah, and I think, you know, they, they're still gonna have the ability for those, the rental inspectors, sorry, I should clarify. The rental inspector is gonna have that ability to. Require the the unit be vacated in the interim if it's a serious life safety issue. Same thing as, you know, under the existing authority and codes that we have, the building code official could potentially do that if it's a. A serious life safety threat, so. I understand the urgency, but more than likely, when you're looking at appeals that need to be heard. Um it's not likely to be one of those serious life safety issues. That that needs an immediate answer.
I think I saw somewhere in there too that that it's actually gonna be on a website with. With the inspections. So if people want to look at a a home that they want to rent, they could actually go out and take a look.
Yep, there would be, we'd have a registry created that would keep track of those passing and failing grades, yep.
And I just want to say that I think that one, the most obviously, the highly contested thing was egress windows, because that's gonna be a substantial cost for the landlords. If they were renting out a basement, this probably should have been rented out in the first place, but. The other thing was sidewalks going up to the house. It was like, well, it's, does it have to, what if it's a quarter inch shop, are we gonna make them rip out their sidewalk? So I just want, I want to let you guys know that we erred on the side of safety as a committee. But that was one thing that we put in there, so just so you know.
Yeah, our general focus here was to focus on issues that would be human safety concerns as a reason to be inspecting. Um as as the purpose of this, that we're not trying to uh. Go in and look for things that aren't human safety concerns, but if there's a human safety concern, it needs to be addressed and fixed.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll open it up to the audience. Would you want the audience to discuss this?
Good evening, Josh Peterson. I sat on the committee and we spent a lot of time and and my main concern is egress windows. Egress windows weren't really adopted until twenty twenty one by the International Building Code, so. It's very possible that a lot of these properties, rental properties. May not meet that guideline. And when you think of an egress window, you think of a basement, but. The way this ordinance applies is any sleeping area, so basement, main floor, second story, third story. Whatever it may be, um it's 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 gonna be a huge expense and and I get it, I I've been in the rental business for a long time. Safety's always a number one priority. Um but when you're looking at. That type of um investment that you're gonna have to put in on that. The basement, I mean, I I get that, but on on your first, second, third story. Anything before twenty twenty one, it's possible that those windows may not be compliant. Now, the new ones, that's very possible, but. You know, our community is a hundred years old, and some of those were built as apartments, so I think we need to kind of go into that. Mindset as well. Now, if 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 a building is taken, it's retrofitted and made into an apartment building. I I I get that, but if it's built as an apartment building, that's been an apartment building for. You know, eighty, ninety years or whatever it is, I think we just need to consider the egress, um maybe on those other sto- other stories. My my other thought is too, the compromise that that the city has come up with is. Well, if it's unoccupied for six months or it's sold. Then it needs to be brought up to standards on the egress windows and the smoke alarms. That's great, but if you're wanting to sell it, someone is going to have to pay that bill. Whether it's the person selling it or the person that's buying it, it's gonna depreciate the value of that property. On an asking price or a selling price. When it's all said and done. Um speaking to the electrical inspector. If a hardwired smoke detector is added and you get into that panel. And say you have fuses, which is acceptable, um that whole panel has to get switched out, which is. Four, five thousand dollars, whatever. I'm not an electrician, I paid for it a lot on that end, but. I I I I think this program is great and and and. Jordan and I, and and I mean, sitting on the committee, we've put a ton of time into this, and I think it's a great program. But I think we just need to look at a few of those things. Going in and saying, okay, I mean, this is, this is what we have to do. Some of these properties. That landlord landlord will buy. Um it may take six months to rehab them, depending upon the condition, um to bring them up to livable standards. So that's six months, I think. And 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 I don't have an answer, but I just wanted to bring that up. And everybody thinks egress windows and that's for in a basement, but really it's. It's several stories, depending upon the property you have. So I just wanted you guys to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to discuss this?
Uh Jeff Bafti, I just have one on the egress window. What's the timeframe to have it done? If you implemented this this year, well, how soon did you have? Here's why I ask. You can't get a guy to put an egress window in right now. And and they cost about two to three thousand dollars, but good ones quit. So 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 the only thing I ask is, I I like egress windows, they're a good idea, but. To to say you have to have it, and there's hundreds of them in town that need to be done, and you're not gonna get it done, now we're gonna penalize the guy. Because he didn't get his done on the list, but somebody else did, and now we gotta evict those tenants. Because that egress window's not done.
I think the discussion we had was like one cycle, which would be three years maybe, or maybe even five years.
Well, my recommendation would be nine years, like the council term limits. Well, I I. I just, I just think you'd have to have to give a little leeway on the on the egress. Everything else is pretty easy to complete.
I think it should be considered that you have a work order in to get these done. And if, if they say it's gonna take us one year, one year and a half to get done, well, we have to accept that. As he has an order for the work to be done.
And that's one of the main reasons why when we were putting this together. We didn't attach a specific timeframe for making those initial corrections. And we also gave that rental inspector the ability to extend those deadlines under situations that call for it, so. If you've got somebody who's working on getting their egress windows taken care of. Then the rental inspector would have that ability to shift that deadline out, as long as he sees that they're putting in the effort. To get that taken care of.
And any existing, correct, Justin? Any of the existing rental homes would have this exception?
Correct, yep. Any of any of the existing would have that uh that grandfathering capability, so.
So if I bought a house. In February, because we're gonna enact this in January if it passes. And I bought it with an upstairs, just to to address what Josh is saying. And I bought it with with uh knowing there's a a apartment upstairs. But it's saying we need it. If I, so I have to put it in to cover the bedroom. I won't be grandfathered in, because I bought it knowing I had to do.
If, I think I'm I'm following you, and I think that's correct, so I mean, that that. You know, if you're looking for a date to say when it switches over, that would be whether it's occupied as of December thirty first, twenty twenty five. So if you've bought it and somebody's in it as of December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Then you're gonna qualify for these grandfathering, uh you know, standards. If it's January first and there's no tenant in there. Then they're gonna need to meet the the full standards.
Guess the reason I say is because when you buy a house, it says on there. You know, the the realtor will advertise it as a four bedroom house, well, we, they won't be able to advertise four bedroom house. If it's not up to go.
Only if it's a primary, I guess.
Like I said, the windows were highly contested.
And I want to say that. I I know that the three point three uh came from Brookings, but I believe that came from an older standard. From an older building code. Um so I I don't remember the dates of when those all transitioned, but one of the communities had. Um several dates of where they stepped up the sizes that they needed, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Hearing and first reading on ordinance oh, twenty twenty five dash zero seven, rezoning of. The lot shown on the agenda, Mr. Genegas.
Um real quick, the three point three was twenty implied by twenty four tall, twenty inches wide by twenty four inches tall.
Yep.
Sorry, it was a long walk. Mark Genegas with the city. Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning unanimously. Um signs are posted, uh neighbors were notified, published in the paper. There was one. Letter that we got that was against it, um one call as well. Um they had concerns about drainage in the area. Um with this rezone. Um it's about the rezone, not any buildings that are going up in the area, um so that's kind of where the discussion led with that. Back in twenty fourteen, this was TWC and it got rezoned to R four. Uh the applicant would like to put it back to TWC for the three parcels that are shown up there. They have a purchase agreement signed contingent on the rezone um for this location. Uh they, the applicant or purchasers. Reached out to me and said that they'd like to put a storage unit or a storage garage, shop type thing in that area. Um but question was brought up, why it was rezoned in twenty fourteen? And it was because of the residents that's on that lot. Uh they couldn't get a conventional house loan for that, because it was zoned commercially. So that's why they're leaving that part out of the request for rezone. Um I can answer any questions that you have for me, um applicants here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Motion by Mr. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Church. Further discussion? One abstention? Would you want the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries, and that is it. We are adjourned. No, only times to say, get the thing in.